I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of our folks are present and accounted for. Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda? Madam Superintendent?
I believe they will be made under individual committee reports.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Winthrop School Committee meeting October 2, 2019. Is that my oath?
Good.
All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Winthrop School Committee Workshop meeting October 16, 2019. Some oaths?
Suffering.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Under personnel then. I have to catch up with my checks here. It's going so fast. It's blipping. Personnel. Motion to approve the nomination of Matthew Andreasen as Winthrop High School Math teacher.
Second.
Discussion. Is anybody here to speak to him? Is he here?
He's not here.
He's not here.
Conferences. Yes.
Oh, yeah. Would you like to speak to? We all have his information in your packet. So, anything else you want to say besides what's in the packet?
Hold on. We're very pleased that we were able to find mid-year experienced math teacher at the secondary level.
For sure. So, no further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. You see there for the information only the new hires of Justin Powery, special ed tech tech three, Winthrop Grade School, and then you also have in your package a list of the winter coaches and volunteers for your information. Okay, I'm starting to get too much paper here. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you very much. More paper. So, the first item on my report is the finances, and we are approximately 67% through the fiscal year. For folks who need to be reminded, the fiscal year starts July 1, not September 1. We are monitoring pretty carefully our expenses. One of the things that I usually take a look at right about now is whether I see a freeze coming, and I don't. I think that if everything stays on course barring any disasters, we are in the place we wanted to be when the budget was put together. One of the things that I'll only touch upon lightly is our revenues. As you know, we're working closely with the town. Some of their business functions are in flux right now. They've had a number of personnel changes, and we are working with them to make sure that things such as our revenues for adult education and our local funds as well as our school nutrition plans are transferred. So, that's coming. Our other finances, some of the things we're going to touch on down below. That's okay.
I'm sorry. I apologize. She gave me the sloshes. She told me I wouldn't have to go off. Did you inhale?
No, please, every time. I don't need these honey.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Just under your, some of our expenditures, as a reminder, that we lost all of our technology people, say about 0.25 at the high school at the beginning of the school year, and we hired Sierra Communications. So, as you go through Article 5, one of the lines is going to start popping pretty soon as we're paying Sierra out of the line that doesn't have any money on it. However, I wouldn't worry about that because we do have in the same article sufficient funds in positions that have not been filled. So, don't let that worry you at this time. Otherwise, I think we're in great shape. My forecast on the winter that may begin Friday, that looks like it's going to be long and cold, so I'm going to start watching pretty carefully the oil lines. You may recall that it was about a year ago that we renegotiated our electric rates. We're about to reap the benefit of that. The first six months was not good. That was under the old contract. Now, we're under the new one, and hopefully those lower kilowatt hours are going to help us with our electrical bills. So, I will say we still need our staff to turn lights off and be energy conscious, but hopefully those kilowatt changes will help us in the long run. Any questions under the finance report?
Did you say why I was distracted by percentage we should be?
I did. 67. But 67 is misleading because a lot of the accounts, for example, supplies, ropes, techs, ropes, technology, are paid at different times in the year. So, you might look at the Article 5, for example, and say, oh, you know, it seems like we've only got, I don't know, 40 or 50% left. Well, we bought all of those materials at the beginning of the year. So, things that you want to look for are staffing lines to make sure that they are at or about 65, 67%. Health insurance, things that we pay every couple of weeks or monthly. I am watching pretty carefully Article 9, which is the maintenance line, grade school, I believe. Where's Joe? Contracted services is already over pretty substantially. That's just a function of having an old building with older systems. So, if there aren't any questions for finance, I'll keep rolling. So, under the enrollment report, we have included your packet. We're at 867 right now. We're up one student from the last time we counted one, this time last month, which is good. We submitted our official October 1 count to the DOE, and please report within on time. One of the things that I want to draw your attention to, though, is as part of that count, we also have lower waiting counts. When you get the 279, they give you a 0.15 for each count, and those counts include your disadvantaged kids, your specialized kids, and so on, and we are down in each of those categories. So, in addition to being down for our overall student count, we're down in our waiting counts. You may recall last year in June, we had funds left in special education because we had fewer students, but now that has rolled into lower student counts for the 2021 school year. So, I want to keep an eye on that.
Jay? Do we have an overall average of our free and reduced population for the month of public schools?
The free and reduced numbers are also down.
You know what? We're...
We are about 32% overall. Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Yeah, we're around 32. Where's Erin? Erin, right, overall? Yes? Yep. Okay. Anything else under that enrollment report? Moving along to the truck.
Can I ask one question? Do you have a goal for a certain number of students that you're trying to reach? Or doesn't it matter?
I don't have a goal for a certain number of students, and it does matter because for each student, we get a certain amount of general purpose aid that's tied to that student. And you can lose, by example, 10 kids in 10 different grades, but it doesn't impact running the building. You still have to have a classroom teacher. You have to keep the buildings open, but you just depressed your general purpose aid by around numbers of $100,000. So, that you in turn end up having to raise locally your fund at some other place.
I think the rest of the answer to your question, please break me from along. When a school system gets to a certain percentage, is it 50% or 42% is running around my head and 30% is running around? I thought where you got to a certain percentage, you got more to reach for your reduced person. Or is that not so?
I don't know that.
Okay, never mind, Carl.
I don't. Maybe, but I don't know that.
Yeah. It's whatever. You're still for yours. Okay.
So, rolling along here, you'll find the truck. So, we found out at late summer that the truck, this is the grade school truck, is uninspectable. We had it taken in a Satsby garage, and it's really at the end of its useful life to repair. So, it makes sense to me to try and do that. The frame has been twisted. It's the one that we plow with, so it really doesn't make sense to repair it because you wouldn't have what you need after you've spent a lot of money. So, in your packet, and I want to thank Mrs. Shumway for encouraging me to do this. We didn't have a document like this until now. We have created a bidding form of documents, and I think that this is going to be good going forward, not only for the truck, but for other things, other capital purchases that you may want to buy. So, we spec'd out, I talked with the maintenance staff, and what they wanted, talked with other folks who were far more facile with sort of information than I am, and spec'd out a new 2020 four-wheel-drive truck. The bids are coming in on the 27th. We have funds right now on the elementary maintenance lines for the truck of about $3,000 that we haven't used yet. So, once I know what the truck will cost, we'll have to look at if that's going to be enough to lease it over the next five years. We did, if you may recall, pay off the tractor in June, so we have some capacity. We're hoping in our 2019-20 budget, still caught in moves here. So, we'll see, and once I have a better sense of what that will look like, it will come to you probably in December. But those sealed bids will come to us, my office, November 27. Any questions about the truck? Joe?
My feeling when I read this is that it's very fair. It's good to see everybody would have to submit this, but I'm also a homer, too, and I'm saying, is there anything in here that gives what I'd like to see, an advantage to closeness to the school system, if only because if we buy from too far away, then we've got a problem of spending a lot of time taking the truck over there, somebody's going to go with it way back, et cetera. So, I just kept thinking about that a little bit. I said, there is, there is an element there, and I know I've gone through it, that I tended at one point to buy cars far away, and later on, I'd regret it because I'd have to go down there and get serviced or something, you know? So, I'm just saying, I don't know what you even can do, but maybe you can.
I know that when the Augusta City Council considered a bidding ordinance, trying to give local providers preference was not possible according to the city solicitor at that time. I mean, this process is intended to be transparent and fair to anyone who wants to submit a bid, irrespective of where they are. So, we'll see. I did reserve the right for the school committee to reject all of the bids if you so chose and none of them matched what you were looking for or we are looking for, and we'll see what the vendors come forward with. Any other questions about the...
I think warranty work can be done at any dealership, once you buy the car, I think.
I think that's correct. Okay. Ready to roll on, conscious of time? So, the busing contract. I want to let the school committee know that I, we are in round one of school bus purchases. The state has two rounds. The first round is where the state looks at the greatest need for districts, and round two, and the round one is November 1st, November, whatever, November 30. And then the department will look at those bids that are submitted, and you are classified A, B, and C, basically. If you have an emergency, then you go into class one and class two, and if you have a bus that's worn out, which is where we are, you're in class three. So, I applied for three buses, and we'll see how we do. I want to make sure that when you bid the contract this year for busing, I preserve as many options to give you the most flexibility as possible. So, right now, you own your buses and you lease them back to a vendor. That's one model. There is another model where the vendor owns the buses and you just bid the entire contract. I have priced your fleet in terms of found out how much it's valued at per bus, and we'll talk about that more in depth in December. But one of the options that I want to make sure you have is if you do choose to continue to own your own buses, that you replace those buses on a cycle through the school bus replacement program. It also means that when it becomes time to budget for each of those budgets, each of those buses, you've got a budget of about $20,000 payment, and I had put in, you would purchase them over five years, which is pretty difficult. Money does come back to you through your 279. Any questions about busing?
And the money comes back in your lease, right?
That's right. The money, so if you, you have to make your first payment in this upcoming cycle, which will be 2021, and you get the money back in 2122, your first year's payment.
And that's that? Thank you. Chair report. I'd like to...
I just want to go back on the coaches list. The reason for that is because of today's article in the Kennebec County, on the paper. But I've heard ice hockey. Shouldn't we have boys ice hockey and then girls ice hockey? Girls ice hockey with the same laws?
Yes, that is, Joel, that's right.
Yes, that is correct. This is an oversight by me. Thanks.
Chair report. We'll start with, we'll start with the MSMA conference review. I want to make the conference review fast, but I don't want it to lose any of its meaning because we did go to some really useful conferences. I'll start off. The first clinic that I went to was entitled Best Practices for Boardmanship: Keeping Boards Out of Trouble. And so, just as a review, I think that we have a board that's very conscious about what we should and shouldn't be doing. It's fairly experienced, but I think that a review will always be helpful. Certainly today, I did something. I should have led the review a lot earlier. So, keep hands off of personnel matters entirely. Keep email and text professional, their public records. Maintain financial health and transparency. Have executive session for only the legal executive session topics. No secret meetings. School committee members need to support the school committee's vote in public, whether or not they agree with it. Do due diligence when hiring people. Always maintain civility, support decisions, and no disparaging remarks. Conduct ourselves by a code of ethics. We are not responsible for operating the schools. We are responsible to see that they are well-operated. Keep confidentiality. Refer our citizen complaints to proper authority. Do not criticize employees publicly. Be open to compromise. The second one that I went to is advanced board training. One of the things in the advanced board, school board training, one of the suggestions, it came up last year, too, and it's been sort of on my list to do, was to make up a brochure that would be right there at the door for folks when they come through that explain how we conduct our, our meetings, what's expected of them during, say, public session, who their school committee members are, and our vision and mission. So, I'll still put that on my list, although it's low in the priority list. That might be a nice, a nice thing to get done. No badmouthing. Think about a board retreat. So, we've never really done a board retreat, so we might want to, we might want to think about that. We are elected to represent the students, do professional development for the board. We seem to always be out of time, but we need to do more of that. Boards are effective team members with the superintendent, so we all are a team. What I liked about the handout that I gave you is that this makes it really clear that what the roles of the board and the superintendent are, and we always need help with that. My third clinic was regional meeting. We all seem to be working with similar problems. I guess one of the problems that we see some, some time at the regional meeting, the Kennebec County School Committees, was the, some of the results of, or the, what's the words I used? The inadvertent outcomes, that's not what I used, but of some of the past bills, so the so-called food shaming bill that was enacted 9/1919, has resulted in the minds of many school committee members around Kennebec County in families not paying their bills. Lots of possible fixes came up. One fix was to tie those bills to vehicle registration by the municipality, suggested and talked about, suggested at the, on the state food service site, and talked about at the regional meeting just a tiny bit, were to hire a collection agency or a collection business, or to take families to small claims. And court. And we're all thinking, oh, yes, that would play out very well in the front page of the KJ. You know, Winthrop or any other school system would be taking some families who are presumed to be incapable of paying for their children's food, and we're taking them to court. So, but it is a big problem for folks and all of our taxpayers, quite honestly. So, we're going to have to talk about that, I think, down the road and see if we can come up with some possible solutions. All the other things that the state food service website has suggested that we do to make it easier for families to pay for food service, Winthrop has done. Just those two last things at the bottom of that list, which are pretty distasteful. The Kennebec School Committee people want to have a couple of regional meetings during the school year, and we're supposed to ask if any of you would be interested in that kind of thing?
I'm interested in the meeting, because I think that's one of the things we missed over the years is we don't know on fellow school board members as well as we should know. We don't collaborate across the...
No, I like the collaboration idea. So, I'm interested in, just while I pass that along. Clinic, do you want to mention anything more about the regional meeting? Clinic four, managing public comment periods and school-run social media, which we really didn't get to too much. But a new law, again, wanting to affect 9/19/2019, and that was for public comment. So, we have a public comment before all of the policies, but it's a gray area whether or not that satisfies the letter of the law. So, right now, Dr. Lynn is suggesting that we go ahead and add a regular, old-fashioned, full public comment period, and we've put that near, near the end. I'll keep the other public comment in there about each one, specifically about each one of the policies, because I think that's what we wanted. We don't want information about that policy at the end. We want it to help us inform a decision about the policy at that time. So, that's in flux. It suggested all kinds of restrictions on that, on that public comment, which we already have in our agenda. And it suggested somehow or another making a complaint policy available at meetings, maybe putting some form right there so people can make a complaint. I don't know what I think about that, but we can, we can think about it. Social media options. We have, according to the lawyers, we have four choices. Don't have it, have it, let it run, don't regulate it, have it, let people express, but regulate, and have it, only for school unit to speak out. So, the last two that I said are violation of the First Amendment rights, and so are, are not suggested. So, we're left with don't have it or have it and let it run without any regulation. My sixth session, what to look for in the upcoming legislative session by Karen Kuziak was excellent. I don't know if I can explain that anything. She's, I don't know if I can repeat what she said, but she's discussed policies, how they were adopted, what they were going to be doing in second session, and how they, how they got to where they are. Second session all start in late January and go through April. There's carryover bills, department bills, and governor bills, but there's a greatly decreased number of bills that the legislature will be considering during this second session. Chapter 115, teacher certification is being totally revamped, and she just said, please get involved. Come, come and speak to some of those, those bills, especially the education bills. The seventh one was conducted by Flynn Ross, who is the chair of teacher education at USM, and which spoke to my heart a good deal. For 45 years, I've considered public education the great equalizer, and I have also known, a little bit of putting my head in the sand, but I've also known that it's not the great equalizer, but it's the best that we can do. What, what she has done down there is taken all of the academic data and put it together according to some of our categories of students. She especially spoke at this clinic about the academic prowess of, or accomplishments of our free and reduced children compared to the academic accomplishments of our non-free and reduced children. And we can no longer stick our heads in the sand. Our, our free and reduced children are doing much more poorly. Did I say that right? Didn't sound right. They're doing very poorly in comparison to our non-free and reduced children. She made the statement that if we could get our free and reduced children's, children performing at the same academic level as our non-free and reduced children, that our children, as compared to other children in the rest of the country, would be performing at a level of second in the country. We, the decisions that we make about improving the access to education for our free and reduced children seem to be value-based. We make a decision. We come from the richest country in the entire world, and we make a decision to do some things and, and not other things, and that's based on our own personal or group values. I would challenge us all to maybe think about increasing the access to education for our, our free and reduced students and think of other ways with all of our experts' help about helping and not injuring our students, our free and reduced students' ability to get an equal education. She found also that our boys are doing poorly. It used to be that we were trying to bring the, the women's scores up, but our young men's scores are now suffering. Well, the last one I went to was Adult Ed, and it was all about funding, and it was way beyond me. It was way over my head, so I'm not even going to go into that. I'm going to call on Kristin next, just because she and I went to two of these, two similar ones. You might want to comment, or, and then you can do your...
I'll just respond to the session that you were just speaking to, the equity and literacy to address achievement gaps. One of the other suggestions that the speaker made was having more access to after-school activities, that I think if we were to run some sort of data collection and determine, obviously confidentiality would play into this, but determining how many free and reduced students actually participated in after-school activities. And a lot of it that she said in her district where she lives is because of a lack of an activity bus. And as soon as they added that into her school district, the numbers of participants in those after-school activities increased, like 55%. So, that's something that, like Jenny was saying, just we have to decide what the priorities are. And, and finally, okay. So, in terms of the legislative update, that was the other one that I had gone to. The other thing that she, that I thought was pretty interesting that she mentioned was she outlined when there was time for public to be part of the conversation in the, in the role-making process, which she mentioned that all of the, all of those sessions when you are... when you are able to public hearing, et cetera, that those are all listed on the website. And so, stay up to date on that. If there's a bill coming forward that you want to comment on, that, that be part of the process. And the DOE, especially under new leadership, really wants to hear from people in education and how these laws are impacting them in the classroom and in the schools. So, so I'll touch upon briefly about our keynote speaker. Dr. Donna Beagle grew up severely impoverished and was illiterate until she was 23 years old. And she now has her doctorate degree. And so, she had a very moving story of how she, how she rose from that cycle of poverty and the difficulties of our students who are in poverty to have access to education and to be educated. So, she had a lot of suggestions. She wrote a book, See Poverty Be the Difference, that has a lot of those suggestions. One of the things that I thought we could bring back to our district was she mentioned at the beginning of the school year, during one of our professional development days, having a community partnership as a part of that and bringing in resources from our area that support what our teachers and our administrators and our staff are already doing in our schools, but giving them access to those resources so that if they, they see a student knowing where you can turn to or what resources our families have. So, I thought that that was a good idea. So, there's that. I spent a lot of my time at advanced bargaining sessions that were put on by Drummond and Woodsum. The first one, Advanced Bargaining Part One, that outlined the legislative changes impacting the bargaining world. There was a lot of changes that came out of that long session that affected schools, especially our collective bargaining agreements. Changes in things like educator effectiveness and reduction in force, teacher evaluation, grieving teacher evaluations, shortening the teacher probation period. So, starting in 2021, it would be two years instead of three years. We talked about the minimum teacher salary, and I'll cover that more later because I went to an entire session just on that. Then, changes in investigation, the process for, in the laws around investigating students with dangerous, that are deemed dangerous behaviors. They changed the word in the process of that bill being passed from violent to dangerous. And so, of course, what is the definition of that is, you know, questionable. But anyways, just a process of how they must be investigated and follow certain processes. And the students, if they are deemed to have those dangerous behaviors, a response plan needs to now be developed by law. And if employees are reported having these dangerous behaviors, the investigation was done and needs to be reported to the Department of Ed now. So, that's a change. Changes to rehiring retirees. There's no longer cap on salary increases and no restrictions on benefits. So, that's going to have an impact. Pay averaging is now required by schools to provide all hourly school year employees with that option of spreading their ranges across the calendar year. Reasonable access. There's a lot for the bargaining agents, our unions, to have greater access to our school during the school day. There are some regulations with that, but before, it always had to be after-school hours. Now, it can happen during school hours. And schools by law must provide the bargaining agent with specific information about all new employees. So, if we collect information on new employees, we need to pass that information along by law, by a certain date, it means, in the law. And then, 120-day bargaining notice. That used to be required for the bargaining unit to let the district know that they were going to bargain any item that required money behind it. That is no longer a requirement. So, at any time, we can request to bargain. And that was, the 120-day notice was because we need to be able to budget it, but now that, that law has changed that. I have very specific information on this, all in a packet. So, if you're interested in those specific changes, especially on the more complicated ones that I just brushed over, then let me know. My second was Advanced Bargaining Part Two, which is all about the $40,000 minimum teacher salary. So, we spent, we went over the law, which in 2021, the teacher minimum salary by law is $35,000. 2021, '22, it is $37,500. And '22, '23, it is $40,000. We have three years to reach that $40,000 minimum. The state will provide a subsidy for this. There's a little bit of a catch, though. The state will pay the difference in the salary below that yearly threshold for all the steps for current employees only. So, for instance, Winthrop, we have one step next year that's below $35,000. So, yay us, right? There we have step, bachelor, step zero. So, entering in as a new teacher is at $34,500. It would be a new hire, so we wouldn't get that $500. But that's all that they would cover, would be the difference anyways. So, we wouldn't be able to get any money from the state next year. We would be able to, looking at our current salary scale, we would renegotiate in 2021, '22. So, if we decide not to negotiate a salary scale with, with the minimum of $37,500, you could get state subsidy money. But the problem with that is, is that at the end of 2023, the state is no longer going to be subsidizing. So, then, that year, you have to take it all on. And so, that ends up usually being a little bit too much money for one budget cycle to absorb. So, that, so that's that. So, I've been doing a little bit of work on that to try to figure out exactly how we can soften the impact, because it will have a financial impact, for sure. So, we need to figure out how we are going to implement this in our district and, and not break the bank. So, there's that one. And then, the one that I went to on Friday afternoon was all about main laws that affect project planning. So, if we decided that we needed to build a new school, the laws that surround that, like funding sources, local approvals that are needed, the laws surrounding contractor selection. So, it's not anything that's applicable now, but knowing that we were doing an architectural engineering study, I thought that it would be good to have that information in our pocket if we are looking at getting on the list to have funding coming from, from the state. So, that's that.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, I'm pleased they stole, stole most of the things I was going to say. Seems like I went to the same negotiation ones and legislative updates and everything else. But I, I just wanted to just focus on the fact that every year at these conferences, there's what's called a delegate assembly. And literally, every school committee in the state has the ability to have one representative attend the delegate assembly. And the delegate assembly has a series of different proposals, mostly policy types of statements. And we're asked to speak on those, and then there's a formal vote, which is, is taken on those, too. And sometimes, there's even an extra policy statement which is sent in. Let me just say that I didn't bring my notes from all the policy statements, but there were a couple of things which came out to me loud and clear. First, they weren't well-written. It was amazing how long we spent on three of the five proposals, talking about the grammar that was used. I, quite frankly, think that is a disappointment to me that some of those things should have been solved before they were given to the assembly. Secondly, there's a hidden line in there in many of these proposals, which is simply to make sure that all of the delegates are on the same side opposing charter schools, private religious schools, because public education, that's the way to be. I'm not very good at that, because I want to see a rationale for it. I want to see arguments for it. And the path of the person who's in the lead, the competition, may be necessary to make us all better. But they were spending, to me, too much time on there. And it got to the point of saying, when are they going to talk about the key issue of this conference? Which, aside from negotiations, really was, where's the money coming from to raise the minimum teacher salaries? We're fortunate that three years ago, when we were negotiating the teacher salaries, we kind of made a guess that said, we better get up to about $35,000 as far as this next year is coming up. And it turned out that we're close to it, and that's going to save us some money. We may not be getting any money from the state, but at least from our figuring as to what the community could afford, we were pretty consistent. There were some very big divisions in this discussion. And it wasn't that anyone, no one mentioned that teachers should not be paid the amount of money that they were talking about. What they mentioned was, they didn't think their communities could afford it. And they didn't think the state had gone far enough in terms of making money available. As Kristin Next said, we're only really talking about a three-year process, and then we're on our own. Well, as most of, anybody knows, the number-one ingredient in terms of cost in the school system is its personnel. So, there were a number of people saying, are you telling me that what we've got to do is find out how many people can, how many students can we put into a class? We're going to have to cut staff, because the community's not going to be able to afford these increases. It's going, as some people firmly believe, we're leading to a major tax trouble. And so, we're going to talk about larger class sizes. And the second thing was, we have to talk about cutting extra pro-heel of sports activities. And these people are very sincere people. And we see some of those are still in some of the school districts, but there was at least one that still can't pass a budget. And it may go on and on. But it's kind of like, this discussion has to take place within this community. And somehow, we're going to have to give them information to say that if we stayed at the same level with the same number of teachers and students and the same class sizes, this is what it's going to mean in terms of an increase. And it's going to be somewhat abrupt, too, because, as all of you know, other costs keep going up at the same time. So, I think the final analysis was to ask the commitment of the delegates to become more involved in the legislative process. There are some really good stories, not only in Maine, but across the country, where the teachers have finally said enough's enough and have been really involved in the political process. And I don't blame them. You know, if you're going to achieve anything as far as being employed in the public sector, you've really got to be involved in the legislative process. But on the outside, is to have the community representatives through their school committees be involved as well to say, look, state, you've got to increase your share of the load. So, this discussion went on for hours. It was scheduled for maximum three hours. After five hours, we're done. And that was because of the reception times of the... And I, I meant that facetiously, but the fact is, is that there were a lot of people who really said this very young. But I, I mention that because that's something that we're going to have to, as a board, be very involved with. Not that the other issues aren't important, because they are. But we're, we're going to have to work. How can we find money to do the things that we want to? So, I don't think it...
That's interesting.
I think we can do it, but I don't know how. State's got to come up with it.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for, about any of the information from folks in the neighborhood? Okay.
Got one here.
I feel, feeling light.
Joe, do you know what percentage of the town's residents are on fixed income? Because that's the thing that's always brought up. I'm on a fixed income. I don't want your taxes to go up. And the school taxes are the only ones that can be cut. The town taxes cannot be cut. So, do you know what percentage of people are on fixed...
I believe the percentage of state drivers, 17%.
17%.
Now, that means that those would be the pure ones that, in the sense of living on just social security or some minor pension, okay, type of thing. But that's still a lot of people that are being involved. And of course, the reality is that people are living longer. Thank God. Karen's a nice thinker. But the point is, is that, you know, that puts people trying to stretch out that money a lot longer and everything. The others, the other group, too, that's, we've got to look at is accounting taxes. It doesn't seem like it's all that much, but it is. And it could end up with this discussion of the getting rid of people in the, well, the jails are in dire need of money. And 80% of the money for the jails comes out of accounting taxes. I mean, I'm just saying that all of these things relate in some way. But I think collaboration was discussed, that we're going to have to work with the other districts to see how can we, together, cut money and still offer the same quality of education.
I don't want to argue this, but we've been trying to do the best. Collaboration is not a new idea for any of us here.
No, but we've done more than, sorry, the public group.
Okay, so I'm going to move it on. I'm going to jump over number two, because Ms. Shunway's going, going to do that. Just finish up some of these early quickies along with what Joe was saying. I went to go see an evening with Shenabellows at the Gardner City Hall, along with five other representatives and senators. They, they talked about everything that they had done and hoped that they would do. They did a very, very nice job with that. But what I was there for was the no shaming and the unintended, that's what, that's the phrase, the unintended consequence of that. And so, right now, there's a request in for a meeting with Senator Bellows and Kristin, Dr. Brown, me, and Dr. Kluziak, who is the DOE legislative liaison. So, hopefully, we'll be able to pull that off and come back with some news. CATSI report, seems like a long time ago. We went to a quarterly CATSI advisory report. And just very quickly, quickly, CATSI considers themselves underfunded by EPS at this point in time. Last year, they ran out of money, and the Augusta, the Augusta School Committee decided to make up the difference, but they don't intend to make up that difference this year if it happens again. So, we might be seeing essentially a bill, I guess, yes? Don't know how they're going to do that to make up for the difference in what EPS has given them and what they need to function. So, we may have to contribute money this year to CATSI more than we already do. The enrollment, enrollment right now is at 24% from the special population. The school is 81% full, so there's still room for students. They need to get some of their programs up to capacity. They have cut some programs. They've combined some programs. Five of their programs now, Joe will be happy, give college credit. They give a lot of assessments and credentialing that will help people get jobs with the credentials that they can earn right at CATSI. They're going to add an EMS portion to their brand-new firefighter program. The state right now is pushing and offering program to younger students. So, they're looking at applying for a grant to service ninth and 10th grade students. That's, that's one of those pendulum things where it keeps on changing, trying to figure out what the best way is to offer CATSI skills or vocational skills. CATSI is hoping to pick up an extra... CATSI is hoping to pick up an extra forty students come February in health careers, computer tech, culinary arts, and career skills. Nick, who is the new director of the CATSI program, would love to come and talk to us at a school committee meeting if we would like him to. Then CATSI right now finds themselves in a situation where they need more space. So they're going to start trying to do that. Is this whole agreement into this packet? So I think folks, you'll find in your packet, the CATSI cooperative agreement for 2019, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to accept that so that I can sign it and send it back. I'll give you a couple minutes if you feel, if you have it. I don't believe there's anything different. We talked about a couple of changes, but because Nick was new, I think the most that they did was just change the year of the agreement to 2019, 2020. I don't think anything else was changed. Is that, is that your resolution? So I'd love a motion to accept this.
I'm going to enter into the 2019, 2020 cooperative agreement with the CAT, Little Area Technical Center.
So good. Is there any discussion from the board?
No, I'm raising my hand.
I know, but this is the time for the board. So any discussion from the board? Your question, please.
There wasn't a question. It was just an agreement for it.
Oh, it's just from the board, I'm sorry. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero, so I'll go ahead and sign that document. You can see that we're worth three-point-two-five percent. We vote. I'll sign it there. Glad, this past Monday, Kristin, Dr. Brown, and I met with Sarah Fuller, the chairperson of the town council and the town manager, to just start to discuss and keep them informed about our superintendent search and a couple of other things that you addressed.
The audit.
Okay, we talked a little bit about the audit process. And I'll leave it at that. But I'm glad that we have that open conversation. So it's nice to have. Also in your packet is an internet screening information during the hiring process. It talks about how important it is when you're doing the hiring process. While you want to get all the information possible, there are certainly several protected classes about, information about which we cannot allow to be entered into our consideration about a superintendent. It's Dr. Brown's recommendation that we do not do any formal or appoint anyone to do it for us, any formal Google search. So I leave that to you for any discussion? Because if during that search you find out information that is totally about one of the protected classes, we can't use it. And it shouldn't even be allowed to enter into your consciousness as part of the selection committee for the new superintendent. So if we were to do it at all, what Drummond suggests, and it's not, it's not a very popular suggestion, but what Drummond suggests is that you appoint somebody that might be very well-informed about the protected classes. And they would do the Google searches on applicants and then try to eliminate anything that would have anything to do with any of the protected classes and feed the selection committee the rest of the information.
Well, my, my concern is that we've already had history with others in the community doing Google searches for us. And unfortunately, discussing all of that to the point where I wouldn't say it was all wrong when it was, the discussion took place, but the emphasis was on areas that we may, that we really needed to know about because you obviously want a superintendent who's acceptable to the community and you want to be able to answer any questions that may have come up. And we were put into basically a situation where we caught up by doing our own searches. We could do that. But the point was, is that it really took the environment and made the environment somewhat hostile. And I'm concerned that, I would feel uncomfortable going through it again without getting it done early and knowing what's happening up there. I don't want to be told second-hand about something.
None, none of us want any surprises. I think the difference is in a formal request by the selection committee to do, have someone do those Google searches and what you may or may not do on your own.
Yes, for sure. So I was going to address this a little bit in, when we were talking about the update on the superintendent search. But Ginny and I met with Steve Bailey and Eileen King of the MSMA today, and this came up. And it's one of the services that they do offer to us. It's kind of in conjunction with another service that we're not going to be needing. But they did intimit that they would, if we had narrowed down to our finalists, that if we called them and asked them, you know, do you know anything that we should know? Is there anything that we should know? Then they would be more than happy to assist us with that so that there aren't any surprises. But the problem is, is that if you do a Google search, you get connected on their Facebook and you see something about, you know, that they're practicing a certain religion, it creates a bias that you would not have known looking at their resume or by an interview. That's where you get into trouble. And we can't run the risk of having the district be exposed to that kind of liability because of something like that. So although we don't want any surprises, I think that we can ask the MSMA to be that, that authority for us and keep us out of trouble. Thank you.
Go ahead.
We'll see.
You just don't have another topic. I quickly attended the safety committee this late afternoon. And the only thing I want to report on is that the staff this Friday is going to go through Alastair. So it'll be the first, there'll be a follow-up on December 2nd. But it is just for the staff and it's during two early release days. So Friday, December 2nd. Okay? that's it on my list. Ms. Shunway is going to do the update on the superintendent of search.
Okay. If I'm talking too fast, then let me know. But I want to get through a lot of the meeting quickly. So as we know, the superintendent search can be conducted in a variety of ways. And how we want to conduct our search is really up to us. So we had MSMA meet with us on October 16th and help us with some of the services that they could provide to us. We had a conversation at that point of what services we wanted their help with. And then Ginny and I took that back to our bi-weekly executive committee meetings that we have with Dr. Brown. And we've been discussing the different ways that we can go about doing this. So out of those meetings and some of those brainstorms came the memo that Dr. Brown had put together. We all collaboratively put it together, but Dr. Brown typed it up or had it typed up. So the memo that has our internal and external timeline for the selection of a permanent superintendent. You'll see that in your packet. So I just want to quickly go through that to catch you up on what our timeline looks like. And, and some of the, the goals that, that we have for the superintendent search, and I boiled those down to three things, that we really feel that community input is very important. And we want to have a workable screening committee. So we would like to have representatives from all areas, but we don't want it to be so large that it's going to be, that it's going to be counterproductive. And we also want to have an early job posting and hiring to ensure that we have the best candidate for superintendent. So with that being said, our timeline, things move really quickly in the next couple of months. So we're, we decided when we met with Steve Bailey on October 16th that we wanted MSMA to conduct the forums. So that was the reason why Ginny and I met with Steve Bailey and Eileen King today. That was to look at what the format of those forums was going to be. The community forums are going to be November 20th, 3:30 for employees and students. And by students, we're really looking at student council representatives. And we're hoping, Josh, we'll get an update from you on how you're doing with that. And then at six o'clock for the community and parents. And it would be held here. And that is for us to receive some feedback and gather input on what the community and the employees and students would like to see in our next superintendent. So there are really four questions that, that Steve and Eileen are going to be putting together for those forums. We also talked about that since the forums are happening in a couple of weeks and that not everybody's going to be able to attend at that date and that time, that there really is a benefit to having a survey. So we, we gave permission today for MSMA to create a survey that goes along with the forums and that that would be live for about, we said like a week and a half. So it would be live on November 15th and it would be posted until the 27th. And it would be asking those same four questions in a similar, in a similar fashion in the survey in order to gather more, have more community members be able to provide input. And then MSMA is going to collaborate that, the forum results with the survey results. And on December 2nd, Ginny and I will meet with Steve Bailey and he will give those results to us. Okay, so that is November 20th, the community forum. We're advertising the community forum right now in various ways. I'm going to create an advertisement in the community advertiser. I'm going to create more, something that can be posted at the library, the post office, here in the town hall, et cetera, posted on social media and hope to get the word out about those community forums. So then the next step, make sure I'm getting ahead of myself. So then the next step would be the screening committee. And the screening committee would be named after the forums are all done. And so we've talked a little bit about, about how to bring everybody to be representative, represented on that screening committee without it getting to be too big. So this is the suggestion that we came up with. So we want to make sure that we have your input as a board, making sure that you're in support of this too. So one community member, one parent, one district-wide administrator, one staff member, three teachers, one from each building, one business office member, and then the five school committee members. So that is a screening committee of five, I'm sorry, thirteen people. So that screening committee would go through would go through a training on December 2nd to make sure that the proper hiring procedures and reviewing of applications, that those are all followed. And the purpose of the screening committee is to review all of the applications. And there'd be a rubric that, that we have that all of the applicants would be rated against. And the top, I think the screening committee would have to determine, the top three, the top five candidates would then be brought out from that. So, and then they would be asked to be interviewed. So to be a member of the screening committee, you must be objective, unbiased, must be able to attend the training on December 2nd and abide by those internet search rules that we saw in the Drummond one somehow. So there are many ways to go about filling this committee. Because our timeline is so short, the suggestion was made that we invite people from each group like we did with our mission when we were creating our mission statement. So if you're all in favor of that, then Ginny would send invitations out on November 21st. So I'll let you ponder that for a moment as I continue on and then you can.
Can you hear me? Are students not involved in that section yet? They would be involved until the interview possibly? Are no students at all?
No, so the student information, the feedback from students would come, when we brainstormed this with Josh a little bit on the 16th of October, is that he would be talking with the student council. And the student council representatives for each grade would be getting the feedback. And we tossed around the idea to do a survey or even at, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So then the feedback would come in from that. And then the student council representatives would be attending the forum and then you'd be sharing that information.
Okay.
And that way to get their, to get the student feedback from there. Okay, anything else before I continue with the timeline? So then if you continue on the memo, the external timeline is that we would be advertising for the position on November 25th. And the period for application would be through January 10th. And we would be posting that on School Spring Survey School and then MSMA website. We have an application packet that includes a beautiful tri-fold that only worked on, that is in your packet. So this, a link would be posted that would be part of the application packet that would have this tri-fold. And what it does, it just outlines the information about our district that a superintendent would want to know. And then you also have a copy of the actual advertisement and what, what technical skills we're needing in order to accomplish the job successfully. And then we would have the, screening committee would meet on the 13th to select the candidates for interview. And then the school committee would be doing the interviewing January 22nd or 23rd, depending on how many we have, whether we need one day or two. And then hopefully, we'll be able to find a finalist and announce that finalist and then approve that person February 5th or starting July 1st. So very exciting, but like I said, moving very quickly. So even as we were talking with Steve and Eileen today and we were talking about adding the survey and it's a little bit almost late to add the survey in, we were trying to have it open for two weeks. And we didn't have two weeks because it just pushed everything back. So anyways, so any questions, comments, discussions?
So we're hoping the temporary 22 and 23 are good for you, Jen.
I'm hoping they don't have to take both days off. That's my.
I'm hoping that you don't have to take both days off.
I mean, my nights would certainly be wide open, but yeah. But yes, I could probably get at least one of those off and pass three and a half day or something like that.
Probably what we're thinking is to try to get the 22nd off just in case we have to go.
Yeah, I would like to know if we're going to smell that foot coming up and.
Okay.
Open there too.
Thank you. I'd hate to do this without you.
Yes, thank you.
Any more quick questions for Ms. Shunway?
Nice job.
Nice job. Thank you. Standing committee report.
Before you go, is everybody okay with the process for selecting committees and everyone's good with all of that?
Okay. I thought you were serious. All right. Standing committee report, finance, finance report.
I emailed this to Colleen, so I'll show her. Ginny and I have been really busy. We have done the following warrants, two, three A.
We have done the following warrants, 2, 3A, 3, 4, 6, 6A, 7, 7A, food service, 2, 3, and 4, payroll, 3, 3A, 4, 4A, 5, 5A, 5B, 5C, 5D. I'm assuming it's 5B, you might have 5C down twice, but you might need to check that one. 6, 6A, 6B, 7, 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, 8, and 9.
Is everybody impressed?
And thank you to everyone involved in the whole process. They really are going a lot easier, there's a lot less questions. We've been lucky to have Amanda in there, we're giving a lot of them too so that we can go right over and ask her as well. But it's a lot of work, it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of stuff to sit through. So I'm very appreciative that all of those developed.
Yeah, we're still behind.
Awesome.
Policy committee.
We met this evening and we agreed two policies for adoption and separately.
Ms. Shumway, negotiations are still in progress.
I'm prepared. So support staff unit, as I mentioned last time, the support staff unit and the administrative unit moved to the mediation process and negotiations. So we had our first mediation meeting on October 22nd that went from 10 to 3:30. We made some headway, but it's still unresolved. So we're going to move it then on November 22nd. And that is going to run from 9 to 3. And then the administrative unit mediation is scheduled for December 5th. And that is going to run 9 to 3.
Thank you. And administrator open forum, who wants to go first?
I will, sorry. Just want to let you know that we're starting middle school sports tomorrow. We don't have that much of a gap for the seasons at that level. Just basically that's to help out some gym time. I'm sure you might have heard that you feel like you went to the state championship last weekend. But we also had the boys and girls cross country at the state championship. It was pretty awesome. Last, absolutely, last Friday, we also had the Latin club was out and had a great showing. Camden Tweedy was quite a standout for us, we wanted to mention that. The girls cross country team also won sportsmanship while they were there. Aliyah Wilson Calhoun was voted player of the year for girls soccer. Keaton Choak was voted player of the year in football. Football's playing this Friday, hopefully we will have no snow. We also started into a track at the St. Don's and girls hockey, as Joel mentioned earlier. We had three athletes placed in the top 25 across country, which was quite a feat because there was 200 athletes for the boys and 200 plus athletes. Football, field hockey, and girls cross country won their conferences respectfully. And on top of all that, we had 11 academic all-stars, which are for seniors that maintain the 93 or better throughout the season. Had a lot of good feedback for the first, going into the second season. Family ID is a great communication piece. But on top of that, it's been very easy for parents to use and set up. And just wanted to, outside of the sports and global grid of the world, we've got our tech team, which is up and running at the high school, which is really cool. And that is, we have a Facebook page, a Twitter account, and all those things that had existed already, but we've kind of refocused them. That's a great way to find up-to-date information if you can navigate onto the website. So, that's all here.
Thank you.
Any questions?
And I've already checked it.
They don't do that type of work.
No, they make house calls.
They don't, no, we just, we get together and try to organize ways to celebrate the kids online.
Who's up?
So I might go finish up the high school. My apologies for being late. We had parent teacher conferences, our second night this evening. And actually it was very well attended last night. There was a steady queue of parents coming in and out. Tonight was not, it is fast-paced. I will note, and I gotta ask, who turns the lights on and off? Because it was very dark outside that building, the parents coming in. They're automatic, so much of it is gender-based, the vice rules for the high school. And I thought it was basically boy policy. Because if you've been in education as long as I have, it was boilerplate MSMA policy from above 2,000 that was in the handbook. So when we were doing our work to get ready to request a change in policy, I was a little surprised to find out that the policy actually put a lot of that up to the discretion of the school staff and superintendent or it comes from. So I bring forth tonight, just to make you aware, going through the handbook, made some significant changes to what's in the handbook. But before we roll it out to students, we want to make the school committee aware of it. I did bring copies in the school committee.
Thank you.
Sorry, Josh. I actually could bring up your sample. So we would like students to be able to use these devices for the tools that they can be used for, whether we need to do research or to look up their schedule because they have to remember their schedule for the year. But we understand that it's going to take supervision on behalf of the teachers. Teachers and I have also looked at this, their agreement that it is something they can live with. I think that one piece that we added, it probably got a little bit more bite to it than was in the old policy. It specifically addresses recorded and video recording of students and staff without permission. You know, just, it's quite often used for bullying purposes. We want to make a statement that that is a problem to talk about. Any questions or concerns? Okay, we'll roll this out with the student body tomorrow.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's up?
Ms. Chris. We'll go down the hill this time. High school went first, middle school went last. Last week we had student of the month and we recognized 11 individuals. You can see their picture, thanks to the webmaster.
You're the webmaster, Ms. Chris?
Yep, and while I was posting it, I deleted the entire sidebar. So, you can't go anywhere else, but you can see the student of the month. That was on October 22nd, that's why I need the tech team help. School pictures were taken and we all have our new staff badges. And I put my new picture up on the wall and a student asked me, who was that other person? It was only three years ago, but it was me.
Really?
Okay, fine, guess I've changed. As Joel said, fall sports are finished and basketball trials will be Thursday and Friday this week. Student council held spirit week last week, which was really funny, including on Friday, which was crazy hair day. We always love crazy hair day. Main school management came, I can't remember the date, and Ann's came and did a walkthrough of the building. And I'm very proud to say with that middle school, only have like two major infractions. And they weren't major at all, so I was very pleased about that. I'm sorry, Dr. Brown, to bring you down, but I won the silly string contest. And the students chose me over her. And on the way out, one of the students says, I voted for you. I said, thank you. He said, well, it's because she doesn't give us enough snow days. I said, doesn't matter, thank you, I won. It was a lot of fun. And again, I want to publicly thank you, Dr. Brown, for helping us celebrate, selling so many books through the Scholastic Book Fair. There are pictures, I just haven't got them up yet. One day at a time.
Who's up? Thank you.
I only have one small thing without a lot of details. The life skills class at the high school has started like a cafe on Fridays where they take orders from staff and deliver muffins and things like that. Like I said, I don't have a lot of detail, but I know that they're really excited about it. It's going to bring in reading, math, shopping, life skill, different activities. And I think they're excited about it.
Do you want the school committee to sign her in and buy?
Possibly, I think it's Friday mornings. But there's also an online signup. I'll have to see if we can get that to you, okay?
Thank you. Who's up?
I'm standing with me, to follow up your stand-up comedy routine. Anyway, it's been a busy month at the grade school. The first of the month, all the kindergarten classes went to the Ricker Hill Orchard, which is kind of an annual orchard trip that they like to do. On the 7th of October was Fire Prevention and Safety Day. And we have, I don't know how many, there were probably eight or 10 volunteer firefighters that were in the buildings around the day. And they met with every classroom and did various types of programming based on the grade level that they were with. And they also provide smoke detectors for all new students. So all of the new preschool students and any new kindergarten students and then anyone that moved into the district. There's usually close to 100 smoke detectors that go out each year. So we're very appreciative of that. We had our first round of parent teacher conferences from October 8th, 9th, and 10th for the younger grades, K-2. Nurse Melissa organized a flu vaccine clinic on October 10th, which unfortunately, it looks like it's going to be an interesting flu season. We've had quite a bit of flulike symptoms going around already. So maybe the vaccine didn't work. On the 11th, Jolene conducted our early release at the grade school and she worked with each of the grade level teams, unpacking Lucy Culkin's units of study in reading and writing. On the 17th, Ed Anne's did come for the risk and safety assessment. I can't honestly say it was only a couple of things on our list, but relatively speaking, as you know, we have a very large, rambling, and somewhat used building here. So it's always a challenge to go through with him and look at things. I keep telling him, you need to write down all the positive things you're telling me about that we're doing instead of just giving me the negative list. But he did give us a lot of positives in terms of the work that we've done to particularly address electrical issues and get rid of extension cords and piggyback power strips and some of those kinds of things that because of the nature of the power in this facility is always a challenge. These classrooms weren't built for this day and age of computers everywhere. October 17th, Title I, Family Information Evening. On the 21st, we were very excited for Michael Griswold to start in as our new PE teacher. We did nine days of subs between the time that Mrs. Magnus Magnuson left and the time that he could start. We survived, so the kids are very happy, we're all very happy to have him onboard. The older kids did their parent teacher conferences, October 22 to 24, for grades three to five. And on the 29th, we, actually representatives from the administrative team of the district, met with reps from the food pantry and talked about what we could do to strengthen the partnership. And we are, will be renewing our Kid Path Weekend Food Program starting Friday. At the grade school, we had 16 students that signed up for the first part of this week, so.
Thank you. Chef Wheat?
One of the things that I was tasked with when I was hired was taking care of a lot of old equipment at the middle school, getting rid of things that don't work and getting new equipment in. And so this has been a long project. I've had, I think, three different electricians, a plumber, a couple of restaurant equipment companies. We've had everything hauled out that doesn't work. We've repaired things that were sort of working. We have some new equipment, we have some equipment that was working that we don't have use for, that was sold to get money off what we did get. And the project is almost finished, I thought it was going to be finished today with the electrician, but he had to come back with parts tomorrow. So hopefully tomorrow, the middle school kitchen will be all in working order. So that will be a first. We've also done some juggling and moving equipment around to try to get a more usable workspace at the high school and some more storage space at the high school, moving some equipment out of the middle school that's not being used. Unfortunately, there isn't anything I can do with the grade school kitchen at this point in time, other than build a much larger building. So I haven't done anything much there. The other thing that I've been working on is joining a program that the state of Maine offers that's called Harvest of the Month. And I've got the official material and it's going to begin in November. And what this does is promote locally grown produce and introducing children to products that they might not have tried previously. November's featured vegetables are the family that is broccoli, cauliflower, kale, Brussels sprouts, et cetera. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be having some taste testings in the cafeteria. Chef Erin's going to make an appearance in a green chef's coat. And serving up to kids, the first item will be kale pesto with a little pasta salad with kale pesto sauce. And then the grade school kids will get a sticker that says, I tried the vegetable of yours. I decided not to give the stickers to the older kids and save them all for the future. But I will be visiting each school with the items for them to taste. And then December will be squash, winter squash featured. And I'm sending my three managers to a free training that the state offers to learn how to prepare winter squashes in kid-friendly ways. So I'm really looking forward to this program. It's a year-round program and every month they send us the literature and posters and stickers to make sure that they really promote all of these locally grown vegetables and foods to the kids. And that's about all I have.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Congratulations on the middle school kitchen. Maybe a day in the master's kitchen is greater.
Yep, so our update here on some of the professional learning opportunities we've done this month. In October, I wrapped up learning menus that operated to all three buildings. On a number of dates, I got about 10% of the teachers there, which I think is really, really good. I got some great feedback that it was useful in the classroom the very next day. So I was very happy about that. This month, I'm starting with a learning progressions opportunity and have that planned throughout the month. And then as I talked about more of these last times, I've set up schedules for the rest of the year by month. So I think that's worked pretty well. We had our first homework committee meeting, which was really cool. And Shumway and Joshua are on those. I thought it went fantastic. We got the books today, so they'll be in your hand shortly. But I thought it went really, really well. A good opportunity to get out some of the questions about what homework was and the role in schools. And we're going to do some readings and some research and get back together in December to talk about what our next steps might be from there. But the first meeting I thought was super positive, so I was very happy. If you guys want to comment, I'll have that one.
The homework committee has homework, I just wanted to emphasize that. We're doing a book study, which is exciting. And I just, it went really, really well. I thought that we had some great discussion. But I want to emphasize that Josh's role there, him being president and his role there is super important because he was able to really bring some realistic information of how a student experiences homework. So Josh, thank you so much for taking the time to be there and for not being afraid to give input, so it's very valuable.
Oh yeah, it was fun and we do have homework. Yeah, I, you know, I really liked the icebreakers. We did, this was just like an introduction meeting and we had like a whole bunch of fun little icebreakers and we just got to know each other. And I was glad to see myself, some of the middle school teachers that I hadn't seen online. So yeah, overall it was great and I can't wait to see what we do with it, so pretty fun.
I think you both, that's better than I was hoping. I just wanted to update you on, was it then last week? Ask one of those, we're around. So last week I went to a conference in California called the Eincall Conference. It's now called Aurora Student Conference. It's a conference that I've attended for the last It's a conference that I've attended for the last few years. The last three years of this, I do work for them doing podcasting and interviews. And it's a fantastic experience where there's about 3,500 people from across the world come here. It's really based on learner-centered and personalized learning. And since I work for them, it costs nobody anything except Einacall. So I go for free. It doesn't cost my districts anything. It doesn't cost anything except being out of the district. What I like about it the most is I get to talk to people I have never ever talked to before, which helps me get better in the job that I do. And then I can bring these things back to Winthrop. My highlight this year, I got to talk to Ken O'Connor, who's a big grading guru. And I talked to him for about 25 minutes. And then we set up interviews for a later, longer discussion. It was super good, super interesting. But I get to talk to state superintendents and heads of foundations and just people from all over who know things and make me better at what I do. And then I can bring it back to Winthrop and to all the knowledge I've got. So the book right here next to Kenna, if you want to take that book right there, on page four, right on the open, it's got a full-page ad for what we do about podcasting. And unfortunately, I like a half-page picture of me. You can pass it around to if you want, Ken. And it really emphasizes that we get to talk to people. And that's a picture of talking with the student panel there. And we interviewed the student panel again this year. It was fantastic. As part of this, I also offered a session. It was a two-hour, 15-minute session of learning meetings, which is the, I offered a shortened version of it here at Winthrop. We had about 130 attendees for this two-hour session. And the people that came out of it saying it was the best session they'd ever attended at Einacall, which, okay, I heard that once. And other people saying, this is stuff I can take back to my classroom and my district tomorrow and use. I haven't got formal feedback from the Einacall people yet, but that's coming in the next few weeks. But I thought it was very encouraging. We'd offered a session before at various conferences, but we've never had that many people. So it was a little intimidating at first when you walk into a room bigger than this and all of a sudden, all the tables are full. But it was really interesting. So thank you for allowing me to go. It really helps me as an individual, as a district administrator. And it really is something that I can bring back to the administrators and teachers and learners at Winthrop. Really helps me do my job. So thank you for that. I want to share a little bit about that. Feel free to hang on to that until we leave tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I miss anyone?
So tonight, we're going to present data, both from the NEA for the Mars testing as well as the NWEA. And if I understood correctly, we're going to ask each of the administrators who have handouts, non-PowerPoint. And at the end, Matt is going to do a wrap-up. The administrators had a good discussion regarding the preliminary yesterday of what we looked at, the trends that we saw, things that we'd like to focus on for the remainder of 1920. And then for the long review, things that we think you need to start looking at for the next three to five years. So with that said, why don't we start with the grade school?
So it's NEA season again. Main Educational Assessment Data is out. We took the test last March. We now have data to look at. It's what, seven, eight months later? So the state is still failing on their goal to have assessment results back in a timely fashion so the teachers can use them. It's always difficult to look at previous year's data. Teachers want to look at their kids that are sitting in their seats now, not what somebody did last year. So until the state can meet that goal, it's always going to be difficult to look at this and have teachers be motivated to dig into these test results. That being said, the student reports were scheduled to be made available today. We got an email last night saying, ah, they're not going to be ready till Friday. Who knows if they're going to be ready Friday? So we don't have results to send out to kids and families yet, but I anticipate that's going to be coming soon. And the state report cards will probably be coming out in the near future as well. But this is the first graph on the first page here. I just quickly broke it out. This is spring data for the last three years. You can look at the trends. ELA are the blue columns. The purple is math and green for science. The bar graph is grade school data. So that's grades three, four, and five averaged together. And the line graph is what the state scores are doing. So you can see that as the state scores go up and down, we go with them to one degree or another. I think it's probably a little more useful if you look at the next graph where I took the same data across the three years and looked at it by content area next to each other. So if we look at the ELA, you can see the 16, 17, 17, 18, and 18, 19 scores. And again, we kind of followed along with the state. We managed to stay ahead of the state. However, either the state is catching up with us or we're tending to droop a little bit compared to state averages compared to what we've done in past years. The difference in the ELA between 17, 18, and 18, 19, it looks like we improved. I'll take that as an improvement. However, there is a little bit of a caveat in that test data. It's not exactly the same test. Because in 17, 18, they included writing scores for the first time. For the 16, 17, we did practice tests and they didn't count. And then 17, 18, they said, well, we're going to count them, and you can see what it did to both the state and to us. Took a big hit. There was a large, large number across the state of Maine that had no scores. So if you didn't write in the right genre or if you copied too much out of the page, they didn't give you a score. They just scored it a zero. And that was a huge problem across the state. So they threw out the writing again. So we won't have writing this year. So how much of an impact that had on our improved ELA scores? I'm not sure, but there is that kind of twist that's in those scores. The math scores, you can see are an area that we need to focus on as we move forward. You can see it in all grade levels, not just the grade school. You'll see it as my colleagues talk as well. I think we need to give some serious thought to looking at our math programming across the district. At the grade school, we just started. As a matter of fact, Matt started today with a representative from each of the five grade levels at the grade school to look at our division math program and to begin sort of unpacking what's in that program and what we can do to strengthen it to better address what our needs may be in that area. Science, we've always scored high. Not quite as high as Mrs. Crisp, but we've done pretty well. But again, we dropped a little bit in that area. We're not competitive, so.
No, we're not. Never.
So that's NEA data, just a quick look. This is our public assessment. This is what the community looks at. This is what you'll see on the newspaper, et cetera, et cetera. Our other major type of assessment is NWEA, which is on the next page, which is not public at all. Teachers use this data. Administrators use the data. Parents have a chance to look at their child's scores. We'll get copies of it with parent-teacher conferences, et cetera. But it's much more of an internal testing measure that we use. And it's primarily used as a growth measure. We'll take fall test scores and spring test scores and look for growth for students across that beginning of year to end of year. This is spring data. I pulled last spring's data on NWEA so that we had the same data as the NEA that we were just looking at. We did do fall testing in all the grades, middle school and grade school and ninth grade and high school. So we'll be looking at that. And you can see across there, it's the same scale, it's 100%. So when you compare the graphs with the NEA, we show much stronger on the NWEA. It's a very different kind of a test. It's also, at least at the grade school, very much a part of what we do. We don't announce it. We don't plan big things around it. It's just part of how we operate. Doing an NWEA is no more stressful than sitting down and doing, you know, in the chapter test or anything like that. So it's a very much incorporated piece of what we do. The results are always much stronger. And we find this a very useful measure in terms of looking at, both from an individual student growth perspective, which is our primary use, but we can also look at it in terms of curriculum and grade level development. That's all I have for you, unless you have questions.
So next year, we won't be able to use the ELA scores to compare against the previous year either, because it would be that no writing, no writing.
They took, when I talked to Nancy Godfrey at the state, she said, well, it was just a little teeny piece of it, so we're kind of overlooking that. And we're calling it the same task, was kind of the interpretation I got. Different is different in my mind. And I don't know what that impact is, but there was a difference in terms of the test itself. Writing made a huge difference for. I know when I first saw those no-score writing scores when they came out, I was like, what went on? I started going to quizzes. The teacher's like, didn't you submit the writing test? Then I found out it was more than just one teacher. It was happening everywhere. And then when I contacted the state, it was happening all over the state. And no score was a huge issue. I'm sure you've had it. Nobody liked it.
Any others? Thank you.
And you're going to notice very similar graphs because thanks to Mr. Ladd. Pass them on. He took my data and made my graphs look like his. His mine. Once again, the first graph is a little bit more difficult to correlate. But the biggest thing for me, as I look over the three-year trends of the NEA data, is the fact that pretty much in all subjects, we are on a slow decline. Our test scores are declining. And the gap between our scores and the state averages is becoming smaller. So that's a concern for us. Just like the grade school, math has certainly got to be a focus for us. This is the sixth year of a six-year license of our math text. And so the math committee is going to work, all two of them. They're going to work with Matt. And they're also going to work with the grade school and the high school to make sure whatever we decide to do, it will be vertically aligned. That's very important. So the next graph is by content area, same colors as Mr. Ladd's. And ELA again goes down and then up again and again. The middle school had a tremendous amount of writing essays that were NS non-scorable. So I'm just not sure how valid that score is at all. The math, for the first time, Winthrop Middle School's math scores are below state average. One of the things that we talked about at length yesterday at my staff meeting, and the math teachers jumped up to remind me that one grade level last year went from, they had four different math teachers. If you recall, we hired a math teacher, and that gentleman left in December. And we filled the place with our math specialist at Tech III. She left us in February. We, the GT teacher, took over the test. And she left to have a hip replaced. So I had a low-term sub, who was actually a high school social studies teacher. And then Mrs. Smith came back and finished the year. I truly believe that's part of the reason why a good section of our population did not score as well as they had in the past. Science, although, is one of our strong suits. You can see that it has declined. The third graph is the Winthrop Middle School's NWEAs and NWEAs. And you can see that our percentage is there of students who are nationwide, ad above norm, grade level means, are so much higher than the NEA. And just like Mr. Ladd said, it's a totally different test. It's geared differently. It's geared for growth over time. And the test self-corrects. If a student gets a question right, the next question's a little bit harder. If they get a question wrong, the question gets a little easier. And it goes back and forth and back and forth like this until they test out. And that shows you where they are. That's very different from an NEA test where supposedly they're doing all of this critical thinking and trying to develop answers based on, excuse me, certain criteria. I did add the next sheet, which is just the number graph of everything that you're looking at for people who like numbers. And the last sheet that I gave you, we found extremely interesting. I did take the student's name off the one that you have. But the MEAs are scored on what they call cut scores. And on the first day, for those of you who came and listened to Pender Makin, she was talking about MEAs. And she talked about something called cut scores. And what that means is if a student scores, for instance, in ELA, and it's right on this sheet, double-sided, if a student scores above state average, well above state average in eighth grade, they have to score between an 878 and an 890. But if you go well below state average, they score between 800 and 843. So you can see the differences in the four grades. To score below, well below state average, you have 43 points. But to score well above, you only have 12 points. And the correlation that we made at our staff meeting was, wow, that's exactly how we grade. A 0 to 64 is a F. And a 90 to 100 is an A. And since teachers in the state of Maine set these cut scores, in my opinion, that's why there's a discrepancy like that. And should that be addressed? I don't know, but it's a question to think about. It's just a question to think about. So I included these cut scores because Pender made us think. And now when we look at these tests, though, it's one of the things that we're thinking of as a step. Thank you. Any questions for me?
I just wanted to make a comment about when Pender was talking to us, that she also said that Maine's test scores, to be proficient on a Maine test is so much higher than to be proficient nationally. That the tests that our teachers created for our students to take, the standards are much higher than the national. And I thought that that was a strong point, so.
And she also said, Kristen, that states who had a majority of students who not meet, the state went back and changed their cut scores so that more students were proficient rather than addressing students weren't meeting the standard. They sent less than standard, so we look better. That was kind of interesting, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we jump to page, to page this one. Anyway, so I have a combination because I'm assuming that it's people like me who have to look over glasses to see. So I pass some paper copies to the committee members. Mine are on yours, but still printing when I like, so. First, I'm going to thank Matt because Matt pulled some of the data together and made the graph for me. So thank you, Matt. The first one we're going to look at is the ELA scores on the SAT for the last four years. The green are the high school scores. high school scores and the yellow the state average. Those are the students that, excuse me, not average, but students that are proficient or exceed proficiency on the ELA portion of the SAT. And similar to the reports that you heard from the elementary, middle school high schools, when I was walking in, all of a sudden, last spring, they plummeted. We're talking 6% of the students dropped out of meeting or exceeded in that group. The math, math was kind of unique. It was up and down throughout the four-year period. So actually, we came back towards the state average with last spring's scores. Again, this is the SAT. The science, we had been above, consistently. And then this current senior class did drop below the state as far as students meeting or exceeded the standards. So I'm a math person. And when I see numbers, I start asking why about the numbers. And I've been looking at SAT scores. So it's easy to get in and get the scores and stop exploring. It's also very easy to get lost on their website. And I'm gonna show you just a few pages from the college board. So you have an understanding of the data that's available. But behind it, understand that there are numerous other pieces of data. For example, I could go in and pull up this young lady's score. But with your scores, I can look at every math question that she did and get a good understanding of the questions that she did do well on. So there's a lot of information in there. And we're gonna just start with the scores. Okay? So this 973 is the sum of the mean scores. So if you remember, those of you, even from way back, like myself, when we took the SAT, the score went from 200 to 800. And the score, the total, if you were the best, was a 1600. Our seniors had mean average of a total of 973, slightly below the state average. Interestingly, though, if we go back a year, no, excuse me, not a year, but six months when they took the PSAT, the next slide is their score. And that total was 937. So you saw it grow from fall to spring. Which, you know, over the years, 25 to 40 points growth generally means that we're doing well. It's a unique class because the same should happen from their sophomore year to their junior year. The next slide shows their sophomore score. And one point is insignificant. I mean, it's 938 compared to 937. But I'm curious, why? What was the testing situation like? I mean, this year, we put them up in the top floor in the firing building away from as many people as possible. We closed that stairwell to see if we can keep traffic out of here and just make a better testing environment. So I'm curious where they get tested. There's sophomores and juniors on the SAT. I know that they get tested on the SATs in the gym, right?
Gym, or PSATs where you crossroads.
So we're gonna look at testing environment immediately, see if we can find a better place for the students to take their tests. But within that, there's different pieces of evidence and information that we can gather. If we look at the reading and writing, then we had 54% that matter exceeded benchmarks that set by the college board, which is pretty good. I think the state average was right around 50. I can't read that, but I think that was 56. So it's still pretty good. But within that, we can break it down, get a better understanding by looking at individual questions, what the strengths of our programs are, what the strengths of our students are, and then build plans to improve both instructional practices, programs, and hopefully we'll see increases. With Dr. Brown's permission, I have requested release days for her math teachers on November 18th to do some work with me, to dig into it. They were asking the same type of questions. Why? You know, what's missing? What is good about what we're doing? What do we do with that? We're gonna do the English. I haven't told you this. I invited someone. I invited, I worked with the literacy project in SAT 49, and they've granted her a professional day to come down and work with our English teachers the first weekend in December. So take the math personnel. I can look at the numbers and explain the numbers to the English teachers, but Ms. Packard will help explain the English content and what's missing and the strengths. So again, as you see on the last page of my handout, you can look through all of those if you want, sure. I mean, these were questions that I put together in a matter of minutes after looking at these sheets that were on the college board. You know, what questions were frequently missed? Are these questions missed more frequently by groups identified approaching or close, being on track for college readiness? Okay, if they are, then it's easy to move some of those students if we can address certain little pockets. But our big picture is what can we do to make the whole thing better? So that's gonna be our goal in the next month and a half is to look at it in depth and see what we can pump with for academic goals. Once I have the science, I'll also meet with the science teachers to do the same. Questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Laurie?
The first page is the MEA data. So just do the grades 3 through 8, special ed stage. And the second page is the SAT data. I think Matt will show you. I don't have a comparison to other years, but on the slides that Matt has, and Matt put together some of that information too, was we have had a decline in our scores for special education students. Like I said, the first page is the MEA data. In it, it comes as 39 students, special education students, grades 3 to 8 took the MEA. And as you see, we're not that far off the state average with both the ELA and the math. There we have, I mean, these are kids who are struggling with learning disabilities and for various reasons, as you know, always in the regular classroom. So they have their individualized programs. And on the second page of the SAT, I will tell you it's below 10. I usually don't give numbers that are below the 10 because of confidentiality. So it's a very small number of students who did take the SAT at the high school. And as you see, the students who took it were well below average. And these are primarily students who get resource from construction and who are generally a couple of areas below the peers. So I think the SAT is a really hard test for some of these students to take because they haven't, in some instances, had the opportunity to learn the same curriculum as some of the other students. We have students who, you know, were really working hard. They had algebra one, but they haven't had algebra two or geometry, those type of things. So I think that some of those schools are reflective of the skills of their learning.
Is this something that worries you or is totally understandable?
I think it's understandable. I think we really strive to have kids included as much as possible. We have a lot of kids in regular, you know, education classes. But when it gets down to some of the areas that they're measuring on, particularly the SATs, I just think some of our kids are not, you know, getting those same skills because of their disabilities and what they can attain to. So we get them as far as we can. And we encourage them to do the best they can on these tests because, you know, we also have an alternate assessment. And we had nine students take that district-wide, that was, you know, grades 3 to 11. And those are the students who, they're so significantly behind, we do an alternate assessment. It's on the computer, but it's more at the developmental or academic level. But we can't do it with all the kids, you know?
We can't do it.
We can't do it with all the kids. You know, they have to meet a certain criteria to do the alternative assessment. So we have kids that, we try to maximize accommodations as much as possible for them to take the MEA or the SAT. And that might be extended time, breaks, things like that, that the SAT allows, college board allows.
So you have other alternate, more prospective tests that you use to measure student growth?
Yep. Yes. All students are assessed in some way, whether it's the MEA, the SAT with accommodations, or through the alternate assessment, which we use to call paid.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
So wrapping up our presentation this evening is Matt.
I like the wrapping up part there, yeah. So I'm gonna show you a few things which are very similar to what my colleagues have shown, but more at a district-type level. So overall, this combines all schools and all grades. This is on a document that, it's a Google Doc, so I'll share this with you so you can have access to this. These are over the last four years that we've had the MEA. So that's all the same test. Winthrop is in green and the state is in yellow, just as Mr. Campbell's. And overall, we're trending, you know, still above the state, which is very positive. That gap is narrowing, as some of my colleagues have said before, that gap is narrowing a bit in ELA. The same with math. For the state, it's basically flat, dipping a little bit. And we've gotten closer to where the state average is at this point overall. And science, the same idea. The science scores as a state are much, much higher. It's a very different test than the ELA and the math. We are still above, but again, as you can see, the gap is narrowing as a whole, as a district. One of the things that was mentioned, which seems like about 80 hours ago, was about economically disadvantaged learners and really focusing on them. And one of the things that I think was helpful when creating this position was really trying to figure out how to make an organized K-12 system that meets every learner's needs. We just, we just didn't have the time for that before. There's a lot of stuff to do. As an aside, now that I'm based in a building this year, I realize how much principals actually do. So Karen, Jeff, and Mark, it's like, I never really noticed that much before. But putting all of my job onto them before, I don't know how anything ever got done with them. So I applaud you tremendously. I can take that off their plates now and really focus on some other things. And when we're looking at economically disadvantaged, which is our free and reduced kids, again, we're green, we're still above the state average. Our scores for ELA are right around the 50 to high 50s. When we look at the non-free or reduced kids, they're right around the 70 mark. There's a gap of like 20 points or so. And that's, that's really concerning a bit. When we look at math, same idea. These are our disadvantaged kids. There's a gap between where they are for the non-economically disadvantaged. For math, they're running around, half of our kids are proficient or better. For our free and reduced kids, it's somewhere around a third. That's a lot of kids. So science is very, very, very similar. These are our free and reduced kids. About 60% of them in science, it's somewhere around the 80s until this particular year. So that's a gap we need to close. We talk about equity all the time and ways to close that gap. I think creating this position has really helped a little bit, bringing this to light with some instructional practices and how to get equity in the classroom. And I think we're making progress. I can see it every single day when I talk to teachers and I talk to our administrators. I see this happening. And our teachers are aware of it. And we're trying to figure out what is next. So a couple other things, I'm gonna skip all the individual schools because you just saw them. So we'll talk about special ed, as Laurie was just talking about. For ELA, this is for the MEA testing only. So it's grades 3 through 8. And if we know, obviously, these are grade-level tests, and if they're special education, they're a little bit behind anyway. So their percentages are not gonna be nearly the same, but we're comparing it to other special education identified kids in the state. And as she just mentioned, this year, it's a bit of a dip. It's been okay in the past for ELA. Math, we struggled with math, as you heard from everybody before. We're struggling with math. We're trying to figure that out. And science is a lot better. For some weird reason, the science test is not so bad. So what we're trying to do overall is really meet the needs of all of our learners. You've heard me say that numerous times. We're trying to meet all of the needs of our learners. And I can tell you that the meetings that I've had with my administrators and with the teachers have been some of the most collaborative, engaging meetings that I've been in in ages. I come from a district where I was there for quite a few years with administrators who seem to be in it a little bit more tightly wound about their own buildings. Here, it's about playing as a team. I totally feel that. And it is amazing. So I know we can do this. I know we can close these gaps. I know we can get better. It's gonna take some time. It's not gonna be a one year and suddenly, yay, everything's great. This is gonna take some time. So be patient with us. But I know we're on the right track. I just want to end with that, except for this one. So I'm not quite ending. We talked about NUEA tests. I don't really have any NUEA data to show. But what I do look at is growth targets. And on the NUEA test, if you are making your growth 50%, if 50% of the kids are making their growth target, that's the target. So kids that are making their growth at 50% or higher are in the green. And it's older to newer. So the graph goes from right to left. As you can see, there's more green on the left than there is in years past. The reds, where it's under like 40%, those are very, very minimal now. Those are separated by grade level and by subject area. As just the overall view here, if you're seeing more green on the left, that's a good thing. Our NUEA test is different. It's dynamic. They mentioned this before. That is not the same graph that I looked at in a district that I had before. There's a lot more red and yellow. I'm not showing you that one. This is super positive. And I'm very excited by this. So the MEA data is, you know, middling. We're gonna do better at that. We know we are because I'm looking at this and I can see those translations. We're gonna make that happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
And that concludes our due presentation for the evening.
Six o'clock. Any public comment to help inform the school committees pondering on policy KS, community use of school facilities and grounds? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a provision to policy KS, community use of school facilities and grounds.
Second?
Remove the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Is there any public comment to inform the school committee about the mission statement? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second?
Discussion. The only discussion I had from like 100 weeks ago, seems like, okay, it was suggested to me by a talented person that might add, okay, wait. People have to die. Since the mission statement says, Winthrop Public Schools' core values, dah 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 dah. It was suggested to me that we put in those core values in case people didn't know, which are the two Rs, two Cs, and I. Respect, compassion, integrity, responsibility, and compassion. So I'll just offer that to you for your consideration. Thoughts?
I don't disagree with that. I think it's, I think we need more signage to those things to people understand what we're trying to get to. What do you think?
I don't think it would hurt to, I mean, you want to keep it short, but it's not that long to remove.
Well, I wanted to help. It doesn't have to happen, but I think it would be helpful for other people who are reading it.
If we're looking to use this on, like, I don't know if it's going to be used on letterhead or where it's going to be or out, the different formats it could be used in, yes. But I don't know if it could just have the words stated with like maybe a bullet point in between, below the mission statement, respect, responsibility, what, you know, whatever the seven of them are, whatever the facts are. That's just obviously, I mean, that would add to it, but it wouldn't necessarily add to the body of it.
Does anybody think, if so, I need someone to add that thing?
Doesn't our letterhead already have the core values listed on it? If I remember correctly.
I suppose that's.
Mission statements rarely contain core values.
In terms of the, in the actual wording. So if we're going to be adding this to our letterhead, it'll be redundant because it's already on there.
Yeah.
Do we have our core, I guess we just have to make sure that our core values are posted on our website in a banner somehow, so that everyone is very aware of what they are. I can't imagine how we would use our mission statement or our vision statement just as a standalone on a piece of paper like this.
Did you say?
I'm just saying that I don't know if we would ever post our mission statement or our vision statement as a standalone on a blank piece of paper without having the core values also present. Like, they're listed on our website, and this is posted on our website, they're listed on our letterhead. So I don't know if it's needed in the actual text, because it's going to be, like Jana said, in bullet points elsewhere. In a standalone, absolutely, like this, then sure, no one has the frame of reference, but I can't imagine how we would use it otherwise.
So to proceed with that idea, I would need a motion, and without one, we'll move on.
I make the original.
Right, this will be.
To accept this.
Pardon me?
His motion was to accept this as a presentation.
Somebody could make a motion to amend.
Correct. Without that amendment, then we'll just move on with your motion.
Yeah, bullet points, as bullet points.
We'd have to begin a moment to add that.
That's right.
But if no one makes that motion, then we'll move on with your motion. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? That motion to accept the mission statement as is, passes five zero. Any public comment to inform the school committee on?
We're on the agenda.
Check off? Any public comment to inform the school committee about the motion to accept the 2019-2020 substitute handbook as presented? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to do the same.
Second?
Is there any discussion about a very new substitute handbook for 2019-2020?
Just a quick comment. Thank you for putting this together. I think it's going to be very helpful, and I was educated about reading it, so.
It is not correct.
Yes.
As I was. Thank you so much for doing it.
You're welcome.
Long overdue. Yeah, so that's nice. Any other comments? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes five zero. Public comment to inform the school committee on policy G C F dash R, professional staff selection standards or procedures? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Somebody has to read the motion.
We do have a change.
Oh, sorry. So there's going to be amendment?
We can file amendment if you want to. Motion to accept the first reading of the revisions of G C F R, as amended.
Do we have to move an amendment now? You cannot just report as what we're doing in the committee. Okay, so in the committee, in our meeting tonight, we only changed on page one, number seven, where it says, "Select three or more applicants for a face-to-face review." This has been changed to be, "Select the most qualified applicants." So take out three or more and add in the most qualified.
Fantastic point.
Yeah. Am I missing anything? Yep. So right now, the way you have it, you select three or more applicants, obtaining to straighten three or more and select, putting in the most qualified. And that was the only change that we recommended for approving it for first reading.
Is there any value in adding in number five? It says to select the interviewee committee members, and then in section nine, it talks about a screening interview. In light of the training that we're doing for the superintendent search, is there value in requiring a training for all screening committees of some sort and having that be in the policy? I'm just wondering about the exposure that we would have by not notifying like confidentiality. I know that when the principal's running it, that there's some level of that, but it's not, you know, going over the law and the protected groups and, you know, going down into the specifics of that sort of thing. So I just didn't know, since we've just talked about it, if it may be a change, we needed to have some mention of some sort of training. That should be, just a thought.
It is her first reading.
Can I, in the first page, in part five, it says, "Assume responsibility for providing direction and maintaining confidentiality." So I think there it says that the administrator in charge is going to tell everybody about confidentiality and what they can and can't do. I think, I feel like we're covered because that's what we're doing. I personally think that providing a training session for every interview and committee that we have to do is going to be something people are starting doing.
Right. No, and I agree with that. I'm wondering if there should be some sort of standard, though, that every single interview committee is, in terms of information that's provided? Because this is just saying that they're going to provide direction, but it doesn't specifically say, you know, the materials that are going to be or specifically what is going to be covered. I don't know. And it might be enough in the policy, but then if there's a procedure that goes along with it, that it would be more specific. But I just, because we were talking about it, Drummond just put out this big, you know, memo that, and we're reviewing the policy now, that it was worth bringing up.
How adequate do you think the piece of papers that all interviewers are supposed to sign agrees to confidentiality?
If it covers, if it covers the law, then we're covered. So as long as.
I don't know where that form came from in the first place, but we all sign it. We have our own rules. Perhaps that needs to be like that. What do you think about that? So, do we want to send this back from our work before we?
I think we can put it through the first reading.
Oh. And then just put your questions in the back of the deck. What do you folks think?
I think it's fine. I would go through the first reading. If you cannot accept it, then you think it's better. If you say it was seconded, it'd be more than anything.
Okay.
Because the process is this will now get posted, right?
Yes.
So we still have a process for discussion.
That's right.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of accepting for first reading revisions to policy G C F dash R, professional staff selection standards or procedure? Motion passes five zero. Is there any public comment to inform the school board about revisions to policy J E C B A, admission of foreign students?
Madam Chairwoman, we're going to table that to against certain December fourth because Mr. Campbell wasn't present at the meeting. Thank you, his input will be valuable.
So tabled.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment to inform, oh, I didn't want to, I just decided it was tabled. All in favor of tabling J E C B A, admission of foreign students? Motion to table, passes five zero. Thank you. Public comment to inform the school committee on policy B B A A, school board member authority and responsibility? Some moves?
Second.
Who's looking for public comment? I'm sorry. There is none. So you move the motion, and it's been seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
First reading.
For first reading, motion passes five zero. Is there any public comment to inform the school board's decision on policy J F C K, student use of wireless communication? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the same. Some moves?
Second.
Jana gets the second. Discussion?
Should we wait until, I don't know about waiting, but the one, the paper that Mr. Campbell held? These are top of the students tomorrow. Will that change this policy or will that just change what is happening in high school?
Mr. Campbell says it doesn't change it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. I guess now. Any public comment to inform the school committee concerning first reading of policy K C A, Winthrop Performing Arts Center, Community Advisory Committee?
May I?
You may.
Interject. It's the recommendation of the policy committee that this policy be deleted.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Did you get that okay, Paul? Motion really is to delete it?
Delete it, because the committee hasn't really existed in quite a long time, and it was when the town was participating in this.
Right now, they're not. Right. Any more discussion?
Go ahead.
So my only concern with deleting it would be the fact that we tried unsuccessfully to build a relationship with the town, with this position, with P A. And I kind of would like to get some town feedback. And if they, and I know they haven't necessarily financially supported it, but I don't, maybe they don't even know that we have this. You know what I mean? I just feel like it might open the door to possibly having them step back in if this was brought before them to be deleted or to be at least discussed.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I was, my question, if we were going to be addressing this policy, was who's the director of the P A C and is in a paid position? And I feel like if we take this away, then that means that there's a need, we've all said this, that there's a need for a director for the P A C. There's never been any money for it. It's always been thrown onto the shoulders of the person who is the drama instructor at the high school, which is not, it's not fair to do. So by removing this, it completely removes the possibility of any discussion around that. And then again, it's like, is it just an assumed that that person in that position is going to now be organizing for a town, you know, level the use of the P A C without any parameters or guidelines? So I understand completely that this hasn't been in action in a very long time. I think even since I've been on the school committee. So it seems like it is not needed. It's not used, but I still feel like perhaps it's needed, maybe just in a different form or approach the town in order to figure out what's going to happen, because this committee doesn't exist, isn't used, and so now what are we going to do?
And how would the school community like to address this? We have a motion on the floor to delete, right?
Yeah.
Well, let's just explain that the feeling is that the small idea of education cooperation has changed. As I understand it, the now during awards for teachers.
Mini grants.
So the focus originally, when we proposed that auditorium to the building, was one reason for their existence, and they did a great job, I think, of everything. And that's kind of like transitioned now. And this was last looked at like 2003, and literally, the estimate committee set up, and we already agreed that the director's position never really was filled. So I just don't know why it's necessary.
It was filled at one time, but, and, so the school paid for the teacher part of that position, and the town paid for the director part of the P A position. And that lasted for, I don't know, help me out, maybe three years?
No idea.
And the town thought that they could no longer financially support that position and withdrew their financial support, at which point in time we had a person, you know, a teacher there. We made that teacher full-time, and they had plenty of classes. And then there were a number of students involved in that particular discipline that's going on over the years.
But we still do expect that the drama teacher.
Well, we've been fortunate enough to think, I think, that the drama teacher has wanted to do that.
And do we have anybody currently on staff whose job title is director of performing arts center? So you've got a whole policy written about a person that we don't have on staff, really, and a whole list of jobs that are not going to be done.
But when PayPAC comes in and says, "I'd like to rent your pack," who does that person go to?
That falls under the facilities use.
That person I'm looking at now, that's the person? No?
Didn't we discuss tonight that that comes under facilities use?
It's definitely, it's not my exception of the facilities.
Okay, but there is someone.
Yes, it comes under that piece, but it comes under the drama teacher.
Okay.
Is that in the drama teacher's contract?
No, I think that's.
I think that, right, there is a little bit of a problem. Would you like to proceed, folks?
Well, we're keeping this as it is. It's, sometimes it's just not happening. That's my problem. It's something that's just not happening. That's my problem with keep raising policies as it is. It's not what we intend to do.
Another question. If we're going to delete this, does it then get posted under with the information that the school committee plans to delete it or it just dies here? It gets, it goes up for impact with a proposal to delete it?
Well, good. That was a question I was going to ask too. So that if people feel that there's a need to deal with this, we might actually hear from someone.
Yes.
Maybe that's the best way to go. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say that my fear in deleting is that it will get forgotten. And that's just the way that I operate, that once it's, the paper's flipped, it's like it's out of my head. So I don't want to lose this because I think that if there isn't a director of the P A C in title, but there's someone doing the job, then we need to address that. And figure out what it entails because what it was intended to entail and what it really does now, I think someone needs to investigate that and I don't want to lose that.
And I have a procedure question. We move to delete, but this is a move to, do we? It's not the final vote. It's like a first reading, but it's a first not reading sort of.
Yes.
First, yeah, first, first chance to delete, but we can't, it can't be deleted until we vote on it again after what we can't do. Okay.
So I think there's a little problem with having one of our staff members do that job, which would be director of the pack. But not be removed or anything.
Will you have a stipend that is paid for that position?
Oh, I feel a lot of that. Okay. Thanks.
I still would like to, if we leave here today and this is deleted or not deleted, I still think the town needs to somehow be brought back into the fold of this. And if that's getting the word out somehow specifically to email them that this policy is going to be deleted or something. You know what I mean? Like, I just don't want it to say, well, we'll just put the word out somehow. Like, I want town council and I want the town to know this is the direction we're moving in because that was a very expensive. And, you know, we voted as a town to put extra money in there. We raised extra money to have that pack put in there or extra seats or whatever. And that, it's already, in my opinion, not being used to its potential because we're asking someone to do that as sort of a part time or on top of your regular job, even with a stipend. But I still think there's a lot of potential there. We haven't had that discussion quite a while.
I don't think it'll change your mind, just so you know, I have spoken to Sarah, not in the last two, three years about it, but not in the last two years, about the whole PAC situation and the history of it, which she knows full well because she was pretty involved in having this policy go through as it was and partnering with that. Because that was a real big push by the community at the time. So there's, the priority isn't there for financial funding. Part of the town. So we can go ahead and vote for a first reading to delete. I've never done this before, but me, the first reading to delete and it'll come up again. Do you, that does sound like quite a little much. Yeah, yes. So all in favor, first reading of deleting policy K C A, Winter Performing Arts Center Community Advisory Committee? All opposed? Motion passes four to one. Thank you. H. Is there any public comment to inform the school committee about policy E B C F, automated external defibrillators? Otherwise known as eight E Ds. Where was I? I was looking for public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy E B C F, the automated external defibrillator, otherwise known as an A E D. Some moves?
Not new.
Discussion.
Madam Chair, I'm just going to point out that it really isn't a revision. We're recommending that it stay away of this, so it's purely review of this policy.
Thank you. So it's going to be the first reading of no revisions. First reading of the policy. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Looking for public comment to inform the school committee about reviewing the revisions to policy J I C H, drug and alcohol used by students? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy J I C H, drug and alcohol used by students?
Madam Chair.
Sir.
I would like to make a motion that we accept through the suggested changes from Principal Campbell. Which changes the original one by expecting a few things to be continued and then adopt.
For first reading?
First reading.
Yeah.
In line one, we cross out Board of Education and insert School Committee. In the second paragraph on page one, we cross out Board of Education and insert School Committee.
You may increase your vote.
I'll continue.
Well, if you pass.
Seventy-two.
Thank you. Thank you.
On page two, under E, policy communication in the second line, information and then we struck and policies.
Is that struck or is that in?
No, I'm sorry, it was addition. I was looking for, I was, it's okay. So it's information and policies is an insertion. Page three. Under number two, again, there was a necessity here of reoperating because it was struck somewhere in the paragraph. In place of number two, we added a new number two. K, which is high school's, it's too much for you to write in there. I can give you this copy later. A, high school students involved in co-curricular and extracurricular activities will be subject to consequences outlined in the winter high school interscholastic co-curricular and extracurricular activities policy I G D J B period.
So long, so long.
And then B, middle school students involved in co-curricular and extracurricular activities will be subject to consequences outlined in the winter middle school extracurricular eligibility policy C H C A A. And then we struck completely the former paragraph that began with two, the three paragraph and the fourth paragraph. So there'll be a restructuring that will take place. There are five, we begin three, six, we begin four. Second offense, page four, number two. This is the new number two.
And it's exactly the same as the wording on the previous page.
Exactly the same. The A and the B are exactly the same as what we had on the first page. But we did strike paragraph two, paragraph three, paragraph four, the number eight, paragraph five to three and six to four.
Jan has got a vote.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
And then third offense, it ended under number one, second sentence. For a minimum of ten days and may recommend expulsion and may recommend a clinical medical assessment. And then two is a repeat of what you find in the second offense two or first offense two. It's the same two paragraphs.
So it is pretty identical.
Pretty identical, striking however, the R in the A. And then we eliminate number one, so page five and number two.
Page five. You have more?
All right.
Then under. Page four.
Okay. Then under B, distribution of sale of alcohol, et cetera. In the second line in the paragraph, it would say shall suspend the student for ten days and recommendation, cross out will and insert may be made. And the same thing in the second offense, the second line shall suspend the student for ten days and recommendation, cross out will, but they may be made. And the last thing made was that, what are we going to provide across reference?
We're going to add to the cross references at the end. Cross reference to policy I G D J B, which is winter high school interscholastic co-curricular and extracurricular activities policy and to policy C H C A A with middle school extracurricular and co-curricular eligibility policy. Because.
Then we just did I G D J B.
Yes.
And so this, these revisions bring all of this into alignment with the other.
This is first reading, so that will be posted.
And Joey, you read that question first. I'll second now. Any discussion?
I don't know. I mean, I think it might be covered and they're just playing on the drug, but does anything with vaping need to be added to this? Or is that considered paraphernalia? Is that considered a drug because what's in it and that's already covered? But I know in meeting with the, I don't know, one of the women from the state that came to the presentation in our school, they're changing a lot of policies to include vaping mechanisms in their policies as well. So I don't know if that needs to be added or.
She means the new law is just going to lead us to students.
The rounds. And they have signage and things like that, that if your policy aligns with theirs and has been revised to reflect the state's policy, they have lots of free signage that you can use in your schools and things like that as well. Does that law change as of September nineteenth?
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? We need to vote? All in favor of the motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy J I C H, drug and alcohol used by students? Opposed? Four, the motion passes four one. Is there any public comment to inform the school committee about a motion to approve W H S to go on a trip to Italy and Greece in April of twenty twenty-one as requested by Mr. Shaler, one of our teachers? Okay, for a minute, I thought you were going to use public comment, Mr. Campbell.
I have just voted.
Do I have a motion? So we may read that on the motion. I will, I just got it back. J.
I move to approve the W H S trip to Italy and Greece in April of twenty twenty-one as requested by Mr. Shaler.
Do we have information here, President Shaler, for the tour? Are you going on this, Miss Cook?
I'm going to Greece with Conny High School in February twenty twenty-one. Yeah, with Dr. Brown's daughter.
Oh, yeah.
I know Dr. Brown.
Why is that?
Zach.
Yeah.
But this is our own strip, I would love to be both of these. This is the most trip to. Any discussion, any questions on the board? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. And now the brand new public comment. Just have something to do with school or education, three minutes or less. Oh, come on. You look like you must say something. Okay. Seeing none, school committee open forum. Which side did I start on this time? Kenny, go on.
Okay. After all, at W H S, we make the number eighteen, many students have sided this season with W H S.
Great, thanks. You like it?
I have a couple more things. Congrats to all of our athletes, our coaches and our parents. It's a wonderful reflection of our community, from our all sports and all the way up from youth who had successful seasons to our high school and middle school teams. We all know that, how much we deprive ourselves on what we do outside of the classroom as well. So it was a great reflection to how far a lot of the teams went. I just want to draw people's attention to the voting posters that are around the room that were done by some of the middle school art students.
No, it wasn't art, social studies.
Oh, social studies, thank you.
It was a great social study.
Social studies students. I checked some of these out when I was voting yesterday. It would be awesome if these could somehow get out before the vote, even if it's taking pictures of them and putting on social media. Especially with a lot of the women's vote and the anniversary of that coming up. But these are great and the community should see them. And some of them didn't see them until they came in and maybe didn't take the time to really read them because of the areas that they were in, but they're fabulous. So check them out if you haven't. The Winter Downtown Development Committee came up with a new downtown development logo. It's on a couple of different pages on Facebook if you want to check that out. And Sarah has also said that the town website is being revised and they're hoping to have that out and running and more user-friendly, they're going to assume too, which is nice. This next Wednesday, I'm going to a meeting at the Rotary Club. I can't remember what it was for that Sarah asked me, but I'll report out after it when I am done. I don't know, I don't think so. I can't remember what it's, yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll know more after I've been at the meeting. I have emailed my district. I went to a couple of different social studies presentations at the state. One was by George Schmidt about the new social studies standards in the presentation. I went to the one in Farmington and I emailed the notes to the principals and to Dr. Brown. There's a ton of information. In my opinion, the standards are more streamlined, easier to use and understand. So hopefully, teachers will be able to get into that and dive into some of that information too. There are a lot of resources online that the state has put out, which is huge. And you can go right into a standard and click information and there's a wealth of information in that. So it's just, it's awesome. And then I went to the main council of social studies meeting just this past Monday. And I have some other notes from presenters. I only went to three different sessions. Nat Geo being one of them. That's really cool. There's tons of free stuff out there for teachers, maps, all this stuff that teachers can join. We were sent a Google Doc of every presenter's information, so I will forward that to you guys again. You can choose it however you wish. It's just a wealth of resources. Good luck to winter athletes and coaches. And I hope that we are on top of letting town council and the T A M know about the forty thousand a year funding as well as the three-year-old program being brought into schools possible as well. That's a whole other added cost as well. And ironically, I know we just talked about this a lot, I ended up giving up something from shout out through fellows through our school email. There was a survey monkey and that was my, what else, what fellows were passed. And I went on about that one specifically. So I can't remember if my name was attached to it or not, if it was a blind survey, but regardless, I did let that be known. The stress is going to put on hands, not just going throughout. Encourage, try to come into schools and talk to some of the nurses, talk to some of the mental health care workers. You know, those are all, those aren't teaching positions, but those are positions that are needed more and more with what's going on outside of the school building too. So it's, the funding is needed.
Thank you. Mr. Frask.
I want to just continue. I want to just continue congratulations that Janet had because not only did we have success at the high school level, but we certainly had success at the middle school level, even at the grade school level with some of the activities that were going on and are still going on. I think, isn't the football team still, the youth football teams, well, not just the big guys, but the little people doing something too?
I think there's some in that.
Yeah, that's. I will say this, I was so impressed with the cheer of the sport, they came together. I just could not beat enthusiasm. It's been a long time since we've had cheerleaders, but you can't get away from it. I think we will have a group, not too long, at the high school level. Of course, this was a great week because former Wintor student Adam Provanto received a MacArthur Award for outstanding leadership in the field of education. I think he's the second one that I know of because, and you might be able to correct me, but didn't Julie Alt also get the same MacArthur? She got the big MacArthur one with the.
I think, I think you mean Milliken.
Oh, Milliken, okay.
Milliken, Adam, he also taught in one.
Yes, he did. And, well, I haven't got a MacArthur.
Excuse me?
Did Julie get Milliken?
I don't remember.
Okay, doesn't matter. The point is, they're doing really well. And I saw another ad for Aunt Henry's daughter, Chrissy Henry, for her work on Lightway in the production that just started for her this, this month as well. But there's so many great stories about what's happened to the kids actually that are left here in Wintor. And finally, I do want to say thanks to all the people that voted for me yesterday.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to congratulate you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I can remember sitting in the audience in 2005 and 2006 because I wasn't really happy with things. And then I graduated from office in 2007. So I've been here for quite a while with this. In any case, I feel very honored. I can, I get, many people tell me they voted for me and wish me good luck since they're very happy with you, so thank you.
Well, I've spoken enough, so the only thing I really want to say is thank you so much to the principals and to Matt for the data. I really appreciate that academic data a lot. Thank you very much.
I was, I'm pretty busy these days, but opening the paper, being able to read about the success of the sports teams was great. And I was at the lab convention last Friday and Camden Tweedy got, he was one of the top 10 academics for students and the team that he was on, this team scored, they're the advanced level, they scored higher than anybody else at them. Thing, this is against big schools like Hammond Academy, Hammond Hills. And, yeah, so it was, and I never even had those kids either, so I can take no credit for that whatsoever. But it was great to see the school that I'm, I'm still there going, do such a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Sheller.
Just real quick, thanks again to the administrators for meeting with our area religious leaders and the Wintor pantry. I know that we had that article out in the paper, didn't really shed, shine Wintor in a great light. I appreciate the initiative that you all took to have that meeting happen and to have that backpack program start in an appropriate way, start again in an appropriate way for the children that you teach, so thank you.
Also, real quick, last weekend, we have like a great sports practice, I can see it is. Sorry. Oh, there we go. I'm not going to speak into mics. Where was I? Oh, yeah, this fall was really great for sports. I, I have never gone to a cross-country meet that I got to go last weekend and I definitely recommended. I've never, I, I just have never gone to one that I'm glad to see the success that we brought. The girls brought home a sportsmanship banner, which I thought was really cool. And I think this is going to encourage me to go to more next year, so I'm sure I should be able to go as well.
How many students do you think will back in the line?
Yeah.
For?
For next year, for, oh, oh, yeah, for, no, I prefer. I'm hoping to get a good number from the student council, yes. I know of the four that I had assigned to, or gave back from the each grade. I know that they're most likely to go, but I'm really trying to get more numbers and to encourage people.
Is there anything I can leave in the comments?
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm thinking of maybe doing a couple announcements at school or beginning of March, a couple of announcements. Hopefully, sending out, sending out a couple emails.
Thanks.
I hope to enter into executive session and run negotiations pursuant to one MRSA 40516.
Seven. All in favor? Motion passes five zero.